Be pretty bad to get fired.
I'd like to call the caucus to order. First three pieces of legislation are from Finance Committee and all resolutions to put land in agricultural district. Any comments or questions on those three?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The feeling accounts would like to have these passed tonight if we could.
Any other comments? Okay, the next one's from the Board of Public Affairs, an ordinance creating temporary seasonable part-time summer positions in the water department. Comments on that?
If you could pass that tonight as an emergency.
Are there any other comments from council? Okay, are there any questions on the minutes in front of you to be approved this evening? There are none. Are there any questions on the bills? There are none. Is there anything council would like to discuss in the caucus? I will be, I've been requested to have two executive sessions. First one will be for threatened litigation, paying the zoning. And the second one is pending litigation with the Eastside Sewer Project in Tormwell County. And everybody should have had in their boxes appointments. One from Dale Grimm, which he had just gotten that to us today. And the other one from Bruce Platt for part-time summer help, as long as this ordinance passes. Anything else council would like to discuss at this time? Yeah, I don't know where the authorizations are coming from or anything like this, but if these services are being performed, council needs to have the proper committee meetings and get authorization for these payments. I mean, CT Consultants, Chris just came up and asked if there was anything done on the work authorizations that he had submitted. And I've got a whole stack of work authorizations here. I don't, I don't know where, what committee they're coming out of or anything, but if they're doing services, they deserve to be paid. So we've got to start finding out. One of them's for the Lordstown Energy Center Land Development Plan Review, North Point Industrial Park Land Development Plan Review. You've got the floodplain management recommendations. And we've got electric fence recommendations. Somebody on committee's got to start bringing stuff through so that they make the payments. Any other coun, council comments?
Just a reminder for council, anywhere a thousand dollars has to be voted on up here.
Yes.
Anything under?
And there's several of them over a thousand dollars. Anything else from council? There are none. We'll adjourn the caucus and start the regular meeting. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. If you please stand and join me for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses. As we do forgive us your trespasses in Jesus' name. And lead us not into temptation, but to the Lord our friends and our brethren. For the highest kingdom, power, and glory in heaven. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and with love, liberty, and justice for all. Bill, if I could have a roll call, please. Mary Elton, present. Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Mansell, present.
Present.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Shealy.
Yeah.
Mr. Reader.
Present.
Mr. President, present.
Commissioner George Geltman.
Here.
Solicitor Paul Nuttman.
Present.
Police Chief Brad Knowham.
Present.
Fire Chief Travis Easton. Planning and zoning administrator, Kelly Borner.
Present.
Parks building and grounds commissioner Dale Grimm. Recreation Marty Gibson.
Here.
Board of Public Affairs.
Present.
Minutes, Attorney Mayor Chris Geller.
Present.
I'll entertain a motion to excuse Travis Easton. He does work in second shift. They'd ask if I wanted his presence this evening, and I didn't feel there was any need for him to come in. Also Dale Grimm texted me about an hour ago, said he feels like he has a stomach virus. So I'll entertain a motion to have those two excused this evening.
Stand by.
Moved by Jones.
Second.
Second by Vaughn. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Move by Radka. Second by Mansell. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. I have one of the pieces of legislation, both pro per your word.
Okay. Five ayes on extension. Motion carries. Entertained a motion for disposal of the minutes. The regular meeting held April 6, 2015. Moved by Shealy. Second by Mansell. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Entertained a motion for payment of the bills.
No move.
Moved by Mansell.
Second.
Second by Shealy. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Mayor's report, I have two sets of appointments. Everybody should have had in their box beginning of last week or today. I'm going to request to have two executive sessions later on. And that is it for the mayor's report this evening. Is there a court's report?
No report, ma'am.
Is there a solicitor's report?
No report.
Is there a treasurer's report?
No report.
Okay, is there a board of trustees of public affairs report?
It's a re, I've sort of made it past and appointments tonight.
Any questions for John? Those engineers report.
We have all the light fixtures, almost all of them are up at this point. We have, I think, about a dozen that still aren't here. They're stolen backwards. We had a couple that were extra that we're going to apply in some locations, such as Bruce's building, the water garage. And we have a couple that were not included in the bid that we're going to include. And we're going to do that, coordinate that by change order with Dale Grimm. Anything?
Okay, any questions for Chris?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Special reports, police chief Knowham.
No report, Mr. Grimm.
Any questions for Brennan? Fire chief Easton is not here. Planning and zoning administrator and director of economic development, Kelly Borner.
No report, ma'am.
Any questions for Kelly? Mr. Grimm is not here. Recreation Marty.
I just want to remind everybody that the relief life teams, community teams are having a flip up dinner on Saturday night. If you can make it, I got some flowers that you, if you want one.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Marty? Okay, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Okay, public remarks. If you'd like to make a public remark after I acknowledge you, please come to a microphone so we can hear your name and address, Stanley.
You look great.
You look great.
That's large, good, huh?
Stanley, we changed it to two minutes.
All right. Stanley Zolven, 613 Brunster, Lordstown, Ohio. I have only two things that I have, I haven't seen here. The first one is the senior bus. Okay, when I was on a couple years ago, that bus was in bad shape. It really was in bad shape. The problem I have is now, actually I've done a scope, and the people want that bus running. I don't know why, we don't have to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bus. We could have a van. And Mr. Mayor, I guess probably you would, the mayor's over here, but I don't know why, the bikes have probably got what a million dollars in general fund. I have no idea. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I have no idea what's in the general fund. I really don't. But I'm sure we could take that money, take thirty, forty thousand dollars, get a senior citizen, ban, I realize asking handicap, and because I myself, I used to go on the trips to Pittsburgh and up to the cheese factory. I don't feel a senior citizen should have to beg for that van. If it wasn't put in the budget, I realize things could, you know, happen. Yeah, I don't know why we can transfer that money. If not to look short on money, no.
I'll address, you know, what, do you want me to address Andy after you get done with the whole report?
All right. I only have two things. Do you want to do the bus first or do the next one?
No, you can go on then.
All right, the next one I have are the body cameras. Mr. Reader, I think you're in charge of safety. What happened on that last time I came last? Nothing.
Can I answer, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. Same thing I told you.
Don, let's wait until he gets done with the whole report and then when he sits down, then we'll address it. This isn't interrogation, Stan.
Am I interrogating?
No, you're not, but you know the rules, Stan. You get down and then we'll, then we'll address it.
You're getting hostile.
No, I'm not.
You're getting hostile.
Don, Stan.
I could be home watching TV and I've got to come up here.
We all wish you well, Stanley. Let's keep going.
You know, you know, the body cameras, I think you have a perfect example of, unfortunately, where was it? Carolina, where that sheriff shot that guy. It was unfortunate. But they had the body camera and they got it locked. I think times, and we have good, I don't want to say clear, chief, we have a good police force here. The problem you have is you're dealing with human beings, whether it's any of us. You have new policemen coming on, and you don't know what could happen. And that's why I'm fully pushing for those body cameras. You had that center here where a man, there was shots fired, we had it a couple, six months ago, somebody was arrested. I don't know what happened on Highland Avenue, where shots were fired or not down there or not. But right now, it's all changed. It's, the whole world has changed, it really has. So I really like going on the body cameras, how we're coming with it. And Mr. Mayor, I would like, and really you, if the money is not in there for it, and I can understand that, there's no reason why the, why this council cannot have and put that money in. They can override the mayor. And I don't think that's the issue here. I think the issue is to get this senior citizen ban running. If it's in bad shape, and it was in bad shape two years ago when I was on, I want that clear. Let's get a new one, let's play games, and let's get a new one, because I am not going to go down that scope again and get ripped apart. If I come up here next time, it's not going to be pleasant.
It's not real pleasant right now.
I could be home watching TV. Hey, as you guys, you can't be puppets up here. You've got to make your own decisions. That's it. That's it.
Okay, I will address.
Why did you give this to me? Honest to God, I did.
Okay, Stanley, as far as the bus issue, you know, at the first transportation meeting, the committee decided not to, the bus leave the village because of issues. There was never a proposal to put a new bus in the budget. Most of council felt that if it wasn't, money wasn't allocated for the budget, they did not want to change that, because in the past, there've been so many requests. I do know when I would talk to the seniors upstairs, they said, well, Mrs. Jones was here, and she said that there wasn't any money, or you know, there was no bus in the budget. And I said, that's absolutely right. But I did tell them that there's a hundred thousand dollars in the fund for council's approval to use as they see fit. But there hasn't been any proposal that I know of. Ours, your committee brought anything forward for a budget?
No.
So you know, if council would elect to go with just a van rather than a full bus like we got, which would be handy, classed accessible, the committee can approve that. But the three committee members so far haven't proposed anything to that effect, Stanley. And you know, there's a hundred thousand in council's emergency fund if they would like to spend it on that. That's the bus issue. Mr. Reader, I believe you wanted to address the body camera issue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll tell Mr. Zolven the same things I told him when he was at the last council meeting, and he approached me out in the parking lot as we were leaving, and I told him that I will not go to the police chief. The police chief runs the police department. I don't. I'm not going to go to him and tell him that I want cameras on every one of his officers. I asked him, I said, whatever you need, you contact me and we can go from there. And then there was a piece of, there was a letter that was delivered here in my mailbox that belonged to Mr. Zolven, and I took it down to his home for him. And the first thing he asked me was about the cameras, and I told him the same thing. So this is the third time that I'm going to tell him the same thing. I'm not going to go to the police chief and tell him, I want you to do this, 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 and this. That's not the way it's supposed to be run. And whenever he contacts me, I'm talking about the police chief, then we will take steps to do whatever he asks for. But at this time, he has never contacted me, and he's, he felt he really didn't need him, because he thought he was pretty well covered, so. And I'm sure that the police chief would be more than glad to address this also. Thank you.
He pretty much said it. It is something we have looked at. We do have in-car video systems in all of the cruisers, which captures audio and video. Obviously, it's only going to capture the video out the front of the car. So could there be a time where, you know, something could take place outside of that window? Yes. We would capture the audio, we just couldn't have the video. Like I said, it is something we've looked at, I've not ruled it out. But at this time, I haven't requested it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public remarks? Yes, Mike.
Oh, boy. Had a lot of fun in the sun.
Yeah, the Ohio State game in the sun.
Mike Zolven, 2766 media. All I wanted to say is on the bus, you know, we got that as a grant through the CIC, but it didn't cost us anything. And I can't imagine that it's being so bad that we can't put five, six thousand into it and have it like a new van. The last I've seen, what's the mileage on it? Hundred thousand, hundred fifteen?
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Dale.
And we fought every month trying to give enough miles to meet the grant.
We have the title now. We don't have to do that anymore.
I know, but what I'm saying is the mileage should be very low on that thing. You know, they're made to go two, three hundred miles, and I see it running around Lordstown, and there's no smoke or, so I don't know what the serious issues are, but I can't imagine not being able to fix them fairly reasonably. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any other public remarks? There are none. Are there any council remarks?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address some of the issues with the bus. One of the, we did take that bus down to Myers last year when I chaired the committee, and the repairs to that bus came back at nearly ten thousand dollars. Plus, that was not taking care of the electrical issues with the lift. Don't have any idea what those would cost. When Dale asked him what the value of that bus was, he said between five hundred and a thousand dollars. I just don't, I didn't think, and I don't think the rest of the committee at that time thought, that it was a good investment to put over nine thousand dollars into a vehicle that was, that had a value of less than a thousand dollars or less. And yes, there is a hundred thousand dollars in an emergency fund, but we're in April. We've got a long way to go yet in this year. And I personally think that we need to be careful of what we're doing with that emergency fund for, you know, until closer to the end of the year. Maybe we need to look at it then, but if we can nurse this one along within the community, then I think that's what we need to do.
Are there any other council remarks? Should we talk on that? What is council's pleasure for Mr. Kajoni? Chris, could you explain to us whether or not these services have all been completed?
Yes, we, as I stated before, we were asked to do sometimes some services that are very small. We complete everything as they roll in to try and be timely with it. Most of those things that you have in your hand there as far as work authorizations were completed for our either ongoing things that we need a mechanism with which to be compensated for. Without any kind of a retainer agreement, this is the only mechanism we have to get paid. From here, we set up a project number, and we track that time and we invoice accordingly. So we really do need to have those signed, they're very important.
Well, Chris, I'm not upset with you at all. Don't get me, take me the wrong way. What concerns me is some of these are very important things. I mean, I don't think anything up here, anybody sitting up here on council, at least I would hope there's nobody sitting up here, would want to do something that delays this power plant. One of these is the power plant. We had to have some surveys done, some studies done on sewer, water, different things, and I'm assuming that's what some of this is, starting those?
Yes, at the last BPA meeting on Thursday of last week, we received Bruce's approval to proceed with getting some quotes to upgrade the San Terry sewer system, et cetera. So that's part of the review process for the LEC.
And I know you was directed to start doing these studies, because there was some questions that the people from the power plant side needed. So all I'm saying is there should have been follow-up meetings. That one right there is five thousand dollars. That's one of the ones that need to be authorized by village council, because it exceeds the amount. I do not know of, never heard of any committee meetings that this one was authorized. So somebody's got to start doing something. We got another one for North Point Industrial Park, Land Development Plan Review. Another big business coming to Lordstown. Same thing. He was instructed to go out, the company's wanting paid, and I think they're entitled to be paid. But these things, we have to have somebody start having committee meetings and bringing it before council. I don't know what committees these are. There's a third one for five, oh, that's the copy, that's the same thing. Okay, now the other ones, they're underneath the limit that is allowed to be spent, but there still needs to be some authorization, so these can be paid.
And I'd like to clarify something. You rattled off two of them for five thousand dollars. Those are budget figures, so that we can apply our 2012 hourly rates to them and invoice them as time is spent on them. So on some of those, we have only a few hours attributed to them so far. But we can easily see based on how much was, how much work was spent on like the development plan review and those sorts of things, that the work with LEC and North Point could reach that. So.
But we don't want to hold these projects up, Chris. And you're wanting to go out there and do them. So we need to start doing what we need to do to get the authorization for you to continue. Because the last I heard, ground is possibly going to be broke at the end of September, October, somewhere in there.
Right, and you know, we're, I'll be honest with you. We're not providing the service because you haven't authorized us to do that. We understand you need prompt responses for some of these things. So we have. And some of those, and that's why some of those work authorizations are kind of like retroactive, we request payment for services rendered. Quite honestly, a retainer would benefit you in this regard. We wouldn't even be having this discussion.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Because some of these issues that you're discussing involve economic development, which would be my office. My suggestion would be, I think it would be best, and I think it'd be quicker, if Chris would send his invoices that relate to economic development to my office, then I could contact my committee and, you know, make them aware that they exist and discuss them with them. I mean, for example, the North Point development one, that would be part of a site plan review. So, you know, if this is something that CT is doing as part of a site plan review or in contemplation of a site plan review, those fees are borne by the.
Developer.
Developer, right. So it's, that would not, those charges do not belong to the village. Those charges would, you know, need to come through me so that I can send that bill on to the developer.
But maybe Kajoni extends all presentation.
And if that means it's something that's done now, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, you know, it would be, I would appreciate being kept in the loop, so that I understand what's going on as well, so that I can bring it to my committee. They don't know about it, because I don't know about it.
Chris, we pay CT and we bill the developer. We don't send a bill to the developer. We pay this gentleman and then we bill him.
Which I did not know. But again, I mean, wouldn't it be, you know, I guess all I'm saying is, if I could be kept in the loop, then I would be able to notify my committee, so that, you know, we could call a committee meeting, maybe, or I could bring it up at the next committee meeting, and we could discuss these, so that I think that things could move a little bit more quickly. And if there were any questions, I could ask Chris about them, you know, prior to that committee meeting, I know, I think it would just go a lot smoother.
It's always been over a thousand goes in front of council. Whoever is authorized needs expenses over five thousand dollars. Soon as they got that, should have.
Should get into proper committee meeting.
After they got it. Because now, this work's all being done, and then I'm going to put up the other.
Chris, it just, I don't know whether there's a thousand dollars worth of work on these, but he said that's how much the proposed cap would be.
The fees you're proposing then. It's going to go over a thousand, so it should be.
I agree. It should be voted up to five thousand. Even if it's an estimate at the five thousand dollars, okay, now Kelly's got a good point there and stuff, but the committee, whichever committee it is, when Chris says, you know, we're probably going to have the five thousand dollars, you're saying right there in it, there should be a committee meeting, and it should be in front of this council, but should we or should we not authorize this to go on? John?
I think in the past, a lot of what was done, was done right here as a motion on council floors, and then came through as council as a whole. There was no legislation ordered for those work authorizations. Didn't necessarily come through a committee. It might have been the chair of the committee who saw the work authorization and brought it to council and said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize this, and it was done right here on this floor rather than at a committee meeting.
And some of these are probably, and it's a right thing for Bruce and the BPA to be starting to do these studies, because I know Mr. Siderowitz, he had engineers up here asking questions and stuff, so even if, you know, it just needs to be covered, so that we're doing what we're supposed to do also, is all I'm saying.
That work that Bruce has had them doing, who's paying for that? You guys are big, eh?
It would probably be the village.
Well, I don't see why we probably couldn't.
Solicitor just told me that we can suspend the rules under due business. The council's pleasure is to do that, and then make a motion to pay these bills tonight. That's why I wanted to discuss it before the legislation. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other council remarks?
Now, that's going to be the full list of those we were given that day?
Well, it has to be one at a time.
Well, the other ones, well, the last three are under the thousand dollars. So that would be strictly out of somebody's committee, probably, correct? Am I correct in saying that? Well, council can still approve. It's just that they didn't need committee approval for that bill, but they need committee approval to pay that bill. Okay. Okay. I guess it would be the whole list then, Bob, to answer the question.
Well, then, what I don't understand is whoever's ordering these should be contacting the committee, so they know what's going on. I don't know who authorized any of these.
That's basically why I started discussing.
Well, yeah, but how did.
We need to communicate somehow and.
How did it, all right, who said to do it?
Well, I remember last year at a.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Sometimes not at a meeting, not at a council meeting, not at a BPA meeting, we will get a request from somebody, one of your staff, to investigate this, look up that, do this, act on that. You're demanding that, you're not demanding, but you're requesting, I believe, to have that person be provided quickly. We provide quickly. We don't wait for the next council meeting. We don't wait for the next monthly BPA meeting. We just do it. So some of these things, you, you're not at a council or a forum, a formal forum like this, asking this in units and getting approval from everybody. So that's how they come to be, Bob.
What I'm saying, though, is when people request you to do it, if they let the committee know what's going on, that it falls under, then we're not going to have these backlogs to call.
Well, I can agree with that, but I remember, you know, you did bring forward authorization for the Peterson property when the power plant was supposed to go there, and you asked for that to be paid, and I don't think the rest of the committee knew that.
Yes, it was discussed.
Was it?
Yes, it was. I remember that discussion.
Because I know I looked for the medicine, there wasn't anything in the medicine.
It shouldn't have been discussed as it was. I know Karen was there, but it was discussed.
If someone tells you to do that like you're saying, and I know it happens, then you
you need to get a work authorization as soon as you can. To me, I'll get it to the property committee in the next council meeting, they can vote on it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Then I get the PL in right away, and you start billing on it, and you get paid on it.
Okay. Well, now go on to committee reports. Finance, Mr. Rattke.
Yes, we have three resolutions tonight for the application of land we put in the egg district. Would you like to see passed? That's all I have for finance tonight.
Any questions for Ron? Parks, buildings, grounds, general improvements, streets and sidewalks, Mrs. Jones.
I have no reports this evening.
Any questions for Karen? Public safety and welfare, Mr. Reeder.
No reports this evening.
Any questions for Dawn? Public utilities, Mr. Bond.
I have no reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Bond? Transportation and recreation, senior services, Mr. Shealy.
I have no report.
Any questions for Howard? Hearing none, Bill, if we get our first piece of legislation.
From finance committee for emergency passage, a resolution approving the application of Robert S. and Dorothy A. Bond, joint sponsorship residence of 4970 Island Avenue, Warren, Ohio, 4441, replacement of farmland located at Island Avenue and the neighborhood district, and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rule by Jones, second.
Second.
Second, Mansel, roll call, please.
Mr. Bond.
Abstain.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Five I's, one extension, motion carries to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt? Moved by Mansel, second, Shealy. Comments?
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Abstain.
Five I's, one extension, motion carries to adopt ordinance 26, 2015.
Next, please. Resolution.
A resolution.
All right, I don't have the resolution number, and the reason being, I thought you were going to go three reasons.
Hold on for a second. You're right. I look.
That's why I didn't put it on your mail jacket.
Yeah, it might be another minute.
Resolution number in here.
I sense there was. One last.
Where's the resolution number up there? Here's resolution three, 2015.
I think it's four.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Number four.
There's any more?
Three, okay.
May I have three? So this would be four?
Resolution four, 2015. Next, please.
From finance committee for emergency passage, a resolution approving the application of Tibler Family Properties LLC of 5163 Island Avenue, Warren, Ohio, 44481, replacement of farmland located at Island Avenue and Brentstater Road in the neighborhood of district, declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Shealy, second.
Second.
Second, Bond, roll call, please.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Shealy, second.
Second.
Second, Rattke, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries to adopt, resolution five, 2015. Next, please.
From finance committee for emergency passage, a resolution approving the application of RBD and Dolly A. Resin of 5212 Tibler Two Road, Warren, Ohio, 44481, replacement of farmland located at the corner of Towisgum and Elver Bailey Road in the neighborhood district, declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
I guess two far.
Motion sent by Jones, second. Second, Shealy, roll call, please. Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Just wanted to bring everyone's attention that these are relatives of mine, so.
They're cousins.
Yeah, cousins of mine. And Paul said I could still vote on it, but just to bring everybody up to speed on it. So, yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes, I think for the second.
Is it? Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt by Mansel? Second, Reeder. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries to adopt, resolution six, 2015. Next, please.
From board of public affairs for emergency passage, an order creating temporary seasonal part-time summer positions within the water department of the village of Lordstown for the 2015 season and declaring emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Shealy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bond, roll call, please.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Rattke, second by Jones. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries to adopt, ordinance 26, 2015. Is there any old business council would like to discuss at this time? Hearing none, new business, I'd like to go forward first with the appointments and recommendations that put on Nicholas Johnson, Chris Peterson, as summer help for the board of public affairs. I'll entertain a motion to have those two appointed. Moved by Jones, second. Second, Shealy, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This came in late, but I brought this up. Dale Grimmer would like to have for the summer part-time positions, Stephen Gill, Robert Keller, Justin Highness, and James Wisher appointed. I'll entertain a motion to have them put on. Moved by Jones, second by Shealy, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carrying. Mr. Mansel, before I ask for executive sessions, which will take place after the additional public remarks, and there will be no action taken after that except to adjourn, you want to be on the floor next. What is it? Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules, and there has to be a unanimous vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to add these work authorizations that Mr. Kajelik from CT Consultants has brought before us.
Motion by Mr. Mansel, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rattke. Comments?
Yes, that is entirely, I think there was one about the electric fence that needs some clarification. I have a letter with me. Karen, do you recall some of the height requirements on there?
Pardon me?
Some of the height requirements on there.
Yes, I think that the height requirements were between six and eight feet high is where the electric fence should be.
Well, that doesn't work for our culture.
I don't think that was what we necessarily were looking at. We were looking at containment of like livestock, not as a security measure around a business or a seal or someplace like that. And I think that what we got when that was done was more for security purposes rather than animal containment. I think that's, I talked with Chris on that when I got that. I asked him if we was going to buy stilts for that.
I can provide, when things fly, I can provide some clarification for that in a memo format, so you have it. Again, we understood the need for what you were asking. Electric fence is relative to the location of the road right of the line, and how that impacts public utilities in locating those electric fences.
Correct.
So it really didn't deal with the height, the recommended height of any electric fence.
Well, it was in that report, though, that the recommended height should be six and eight feet.
I can take that. We can take that.
Well, this is to be discussed before planning and zoning, planning.
Yes.
At this point, you're just determining whether to pay them or not for it.
Exactly.
Ordinance, Solicitor Dutton, there has to be unanimous to suspend the rules, and then we'll take the bills individually. The council has no problem with that.
Do a roll call on it.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'd like a roll call on suspending the rules.
One more clarification. Now, these are up to these costs, not to exceed.
Except for the one for the fence, that one was already done.
Okay.
So the one for the LEC, one for North Point, those are all provisionary budgets. We've only spent a couple hours of time in there. We perceive that there's going to be that much, $5,000 worth of work potentially done on it, and our duty is to give a budget to Mr. Bond there.
So in other words, the motion would be not to exceed these costs.
At this time, yes.
At this time.
All right, now we're going to suspend the rules. Do we have a roll call, please, Bill?
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries for Mr. Mansel's, motion to suspend the rules. John, if you want to bring the work authorizations up one at a time for a vote. Okay, the first one is for $5,000 hourly, projected title Lordstown Energy Center Land Development Plan Review. You making a motion to pay that?
I'm making, I'm making a motion that we pay up to $5,000 for CT consultants to do all the engineering studies for the energy center.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Jones. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, that work authorization has been approved. Next, Mr. Mansel.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize CT consultants to spend up to $5,000, pay up to five, we'll pay them up to $5,000 for North Point Industrial Park Land Development Plan Review. And motion by Mr. Mansel, $5,000 for North Point Development Plan Review, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rattke. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries for that work authorization. Next, Mr. Mansel.
Now, Chris, I have to ask a question before I move on from that one. In my packet that you had sent to me for last meeting, it has a duplicate, I think, of the same thing. There isn't two of them in there for North Point Land Development, is there?
There is, there should be.
Okay, well, I've got two. I thought it looked like a duplicate. I just wanted to clarify that. All right, next one is, I'd like to authorize payment to CT consultants, a lump sum of $546, $546 for floodplain management recommendations. Everybody heard the motion by Mr. Mansel? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rattke. Comments?
Yes, I think we ought to really wait. He says he's going to be redoing some of that to make sure we've got it done, and if there's an additional charge for that, we'll react on this one.
You'd be happy to wait on this one?
Okay.
I withdraw that motion. Mr. Mansel withdraws a motion. Is the second withdrawn?
Yes.
The John also.
Okay. Are there any more work authorizations, Mr. Mansel?
Yes, Chris might have to explain this one. It's an invoice for $200, preliminary plan and evaluation form.
Oh, yeah, we completed the PPE for the water department, and that was used, I think, on North Point.
North Point, I understand.
Yeah. It was a request from Cindy Chusarsky for developing a preliminary planning and evaluation form to be used in any subsequent land development plan review. Will they go on and explain what the form does?
Basically, if any, I'll try to give you a Cliff Notes version. I think if anybody, any developer comes in and has a need for water, they fill out this preliminary form, so that way, whenever it comes to planning or goes through the planning department, we're aware of what their needs are going to be, and if you have to, say like if they're a small water user, like there won't be that much water being used in North Point Development. If they're a large water user, such as what the electric center will be, we have an idea, so that way, when it comes in front of planning, we know what's going on. This was requested by the BPA, and, you know, Kelly wants to be, Kelly wanted to be able, when the people come in, make a request for land use, we would have some sort of idea of what they would need as far as water services. Am I correct?
So this is a form that's going to be used for more than just North Point, then?
Yeah, that was the intent.
Is this for the BPA, then? John, Bruce, Chris, somebody, or is this ours?
It's for the BPA and for Kelly, so that way Kelly can pass that on, and when it comes in, she can work in conjunction with the BPA. So that way, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve on this one.
John, is the council paying for all these, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we pay BP, or CT consultants the $200 lump sum for the preliminary plan and evaluation form.
Okay, motion. Second by Mr. Bond. Comments or questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries for that work authorization. Is there anything council would like to discuss on our new business before I make motions for executive sessions? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion for executive session one, threatened litigation, zoning issues, inviting mayor, council, solicitor, clerk, Chief Melhome, and Kelly Gordon. There will be no action taken after this executive session, and this will be after additional public remarks. All in favor? Moved by Jones, second?
Second.
Second by Rattke. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries for that executive session. Asking for motion for the second executive session to discuss the pending litigation with Trumbull County Sewer to get some clarification, so council can find out exactly where that suit is pending.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rattke, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shealy. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy.
Yes.
Mr. Rattke.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Bond.
Yes.
Mr. Mansel.
Yes.
Mr. Reeder.
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's, motion carries for that executive session. Is there any other new business before I ask for additional public remarks? Okay, are there any additional public remarks? I've got Stanley.
All right, I'm a little confused. You guys help me out, okay? What are we going to do with the cost? Does anybody have any idea? What do I tell the school? Is the money in there, Mr. Mayor? I'm asking. I don't know. I did not look at that.
Stanley, if council would like to go forward with that, there's $100,000 in there, and